Alright, good evening. There's the missing council member. There he is. Alright. I'm gonna go out of order and ask the Arbor Day presentation to go first. Is Principal Laura Fong around? Where's Laura? Come on up. Give her a round of applause for everything. Allison, if you want to come on? Oh, perfect. I thought I saw Jeff. There he is. Alright, I have quite a few proclamations today, so I'm trying to keep them all straight. Alright, well, congratulations. I'm very excited. I've been out of town for the last couple Arbor Days, and so I will actually be out there planting some trees this year. So, in honor of Arbor Day, April 25th, 2018, whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas 2018 is the 146th anniversary of the holiday and Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and world. Whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore I, Gary Soyseth, by the virtue of authority vested in me as the Mayor of the City of Turlock, and on behalf of the entire City Council and all our citizens, do hereby proclaim, April 25th, 2018, as the 146th anniversary celebration of Arbor Day in the City of Turlock, and urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, and encourage all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. We look forward to having you come out for Arbor Day. I think everyone knows Dennis Earl. We lost quite a few trees this summer. I think everyone saw that as they drove by. We've planted quite a few already, the district has, but we're looking forward to having some additional trees there to beautify our campus. So, thank you very much.
And Director Van Gilder, who does a great job with our parks.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I would just like to thank Laura and Jeff for the wonderful partnership, not only with Arbor Day, but, you know, every day with our after-school program. We couldn't be more proud to work with all of you and to Karen Packwood and your team. You guys do just an amazing job, not just here, but at all of our sites. So, thank you, and we're looking forward to another great year of planting trees. So, thank you so much.
Alright, where's Maribel Rodriguez? Where's Maribel? Come on up. So, give her a round of applause for National Telecommunications Week. One of our fearless dispatchers. Alright, in honor of National Telecommunications Week, April 8th through 14th, 2018, whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services. And whereas each day, over one-half million public safety telecommunications answer desperate calls for help, responding with services that save the lives and property of American citizens in need of assistance. And whereas public safety telecommunications are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. And whereas the citizens of Turlock rely on their knowledge and professionalism as they make critical decisions, obtain information, and quickly dispatch needed aid. And whereas the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the City of Turlock Public Safety Communications Center. And whereas each public safety telecommunications has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year. And whereas our public safety telecommunications serve our citizens daily in countless ways and deserve our heartfelt appreciation. Now therefore I, Gary Soyseth, by the virtue of authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Turlock, and on behalf of the entire City Council and all our citizens, do hereby proclaim, April 8th through 14th, 2018, as National Tele-Communicators Week in the City of Turlock, and encourage all citizens of the City of Turlock to show and express appreciation for these outstanding individuals. Thank you so much. Congratulations.
On behalf of all of our dispatchers, we just want to say thank you to our council, mayor, and city manager. It really means a lot to our dispatchers to be recognized during this week. They are... They work very hard, and they're very dedicated and committed to their work, so it means a lot to them to be appreciated. So, thank you very much.
Alright, Ms. Glenna Jackson, come on up. Give her a round of applause. How are you? Get up here. I didn't see you hide in the back. Come on up. You took all the chair. Animal control is not one to complain. Come on. Alright, in honor of Animal Care and Control Appreciation Week, I like this, April 8th through 14th, whereas the National Animal Care and Control Association has designated the second week of April each year as Animal Control Appreciation Week. And whereas the various federal, state, and local government officials throughout the country take this time to recognize, thank, and commend all animal services officers for their dedicated service they provide to the citizens, various public safety and public service agencies, and departments throughout the country. And whereas the Turlock City Council would like to express its sincere thanks and appreciation for the outstanding service Turlock Animal Services provides on a daily basis to the citizens of the city. And whereas the Turlock City Council recognizes animal services officers for the many dedicated and long hours of service they perform in serving this community and for fulfilling the Turlock Animal Services commitment to providing the highest and most efficient level of customer service. And whereas the Turlock City Council wishes to commend each and every animal services officer for their excellence in service, which is in keeping with the long and distinguished tradition of the animal care and control profession. Now therefore I, Gary Soyseth, by the virtue of authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Turlock, and on behalf of the entire City Council and all our citizens, do hereby call upon all citizens of the City of Turlock and the National Animal Care and Control Association in supporting the Animal Care and Control Appreciation Week on April 8th through 14th, 2018. Congratulations.
On behalf of the animal services, our whole team, our kennel staff, clerical, and our ACOs, we'd like to say thank you to the council and the mayor for this true appreciation. And just let you know, it's for our love of animals that we push through for the world and society to treat them with kindness, and so it's our job to protect and serve our community. We do it with every single ounce of our being, so we appreciate this very much. Thank you.
Alright, here we go. Volunteer appreciation. Where's... There she is, Ms. Eddy. She beeps before she cuts up here. And Mr. Shaw, where is he? Come on up there. Give them a round of applause for all their... You're gonna have to beep for the audience one more time? Okay, she's done. Alright, in recognition of the City of Turlock volunteers, many of them are here. Whereas volunteers make up hundreds of individuals in our community, representing a wide array of individuals volunteering in various departments throughout the City of Turlock in the following programs: Volunteers in Police Services, Police Explorers, Municipal Volunteer Partnership Program, and Friends of Turlock Animal Services. And whereas, through volunteerism within local government entities, the quality of life we have grown to rely upon and appreciate is sustained through these community partnerships. And whereas, the City of Turlock's volunteer programs are staffed with a group of men and women willing to serve an agency in need of their time, dedication, and talents. And whereas, these individuals often serve unnoticed to the public, but are indispensable to the City of Turlock. And whereas, this City Council understands that government alone cannot solve all of society's needs, and these volunteers transform and extend our limited resources into the ability to provide better service to the City of Turlock. And whereas, the Turlock City Council recognizes that 2,080 volunteer hours of service equals a full-time employee at wages and benefits in excess of $60,000. And whereas, the public should be knowledgeable about volunteerism and the efforts of volunteerism improving the quality of life in our community. And whereas, this City Council does hereby recognize these men and women as true public servants who promote the highest ideals of public service to support the objectives of service to the community, who strive to set an example for others and prove that anyone with drive and determination can be of service to their community. Now therefore I, Gary Soyseth, by the virtue and the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Turlock, and on behalf of the entire City Council and all our citizens, do hereby proclaim our gratitude and admiration by honoring the dedication of these model volunteers who tirelessly give so freely of their valuable time to provide service to the citizens of Turlock. Congratulations to all of you.
Just a couple of words. Thank you so much for everything that you do. You truly are public servants. You work hard. You come to work with a smile on your face. You work next to someone that is an employee, and you couldn't tell the difference. You truly are awesome individuals, and we couldn't do a lot of what we do without you. So, please know that you are so appreciated, and we care very dearly for everything that you do for the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. The explorers, to the volunteers, to our chaplains, they truly are a blessing to our department and the city. The work that they do in every facet of our department would not be done on a daily or weekly basis without their efforts. You mentioned 20, 80 hours in this proclamation. For my volunteers back there, if you have a 20, 80 pin, can you please raise your hand? And I know that we're having a volunteer dinner on the 19th, recognizing our volunteers and our explorers, and I personally know that there's probably five or six more getting their 20, 80 pin. So, we truly do appreciate you, and thank you for what you do.
Alright, thank you so much. Alright, can I get the entire library crew up here with the leader, fearless leader Diane Bartlett? I see a couple others. Come on, come on up. They thought they could hide back there. Give them a round of applause as they come up. They've been tireless advocates for the library. Alright, in honor of Stanislaus County National Library Week, April 8th through 14th, 2018. It's gonna be a very busy week around here in the City of Turlock. Alright, whereas libraries lead in working with diverse communities, including people of color, immigrants, and people with disabilities, offering services and educational resources that transform communities, open minds, and promote inclusion and diversity. And whereas reading, literacy, and the freedom to explore are cornerstones of a free and democratic society. And whereas literacy is key to achieving personal success in school, in business, and in life. And whereas libraries and librarians open up a world of possibilities through innovative programming and through the power of information. And whereas librarians are trained, tech-savvy professionals, providing technology training and access to various technologies. And whereas libraries offer 24/7 access to library services through online resources such as ebooks, e-magazines, downloadable audiobooks, music, and movies, online language instruction, and research databases. And whereas libraries partner with parents and caregivers to empower children to enter kindergarten with the knowledge and skills necessary for success in school and beyond. And whereas libraries continually grow and evolve in how they provide for the needs of every member of their communities. And whereas libraries, librarians, library workers, volunteers, and supporters in Stanislaus County are celebrating National Library Week. Now therefore I, Gary Soyseth, by the virtue of authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Turlock, and on behalf of the entire City Council and all our citizens, do hereby proclaim, April 8th through 14th, 2018, as Stanislaus County National Library Week in the City of Turlock, and urge everyone to visit their local library to take advantage of the wonderful resources available provided through the voter-approved 1/8 cent sales tax dedicated to the support of families. Give them a round of applause.
It is a year of celebration. This is not only a National Library Week, but today is National Library Workers' Day. So, I want to thank all of Turlock Library staff for their dedication and work to make the library a community resource and a safe and inviting place to be. It's also the 50th anniversary of being on Minaret Avenue. There's been a library, a public library in Turlock since 1906, but we've... This is our 50th year on Minaret, which is especially exciting as we look forward to building renovation and expansion. So, we'd like to thank our county supervisor for District 2, Vito Chiesa, for his interest and support in making this happen. And most of all, thanks to the driving force behind this effort, the Friends of the Turlock Public Library, who are celebrating 25 years. They are... They were originally formed because they saw a need for a children's librarian in... At the Turlock branch. And they continue to advocate for us and to raise funds for programs, materials, and of course, the new building. So, Friends, give a wave. I know there's Friends out there too. So, give a wave, and it's a nominal fee to just to join. So, thank you for this recognition, and happy National Library Week.
Alright, then we knocked them all out. Pet of the Month, presented by Ms. Glenna Jackson. Good seeing you. Give her a round of applause. Again.
Pet of the Month is very popular. Pet of the Month is an ongoing program that we've been pleased to bring to you. The adoption fees are covered by our police management team, which includes a Spaineuter microchip for every shot, first-year license. And it's gonna save them some money this month because we have a promotion. So, the last month, this is Patty. Remember him from March? Cute little guy. This is his new parent. He got adopted the next day at 10:05. This is Hunter. Hunter had a twin brother who got adopted already. We've been studying on him. We have quite the list. So, he's available tomorrow morning. He is an eight-month-old. He's already neutered. He is going to be available to the One Lucky Family at no charge, sponsored by T-Baps. And that special promotion is because of Available Control Appreciation Month, we decided that in the month of April, as continued giving back to the community, we are offering a discount for every adoption. So, our dogs through the month of April will be only $40, so that includes all of the normal fees. And our cats are $20, and at this current time, we do not have a single cat available for adoption, so we've been able to place everything. So, we're happy to share that with you. And again, our shelter is located 801 South Walnut. Come and see us Monday through Saturday, 10 to 2, and help you with all your animal control needs. Thank you very much.
Alright, we're gonna move on. Special briefings, we have none, but public participation. This is time set aside for the audience to adjust the council on any item that they'd like. Comments will be limited to five minutes. There's blue cards in the back if you'd like to fill them out. So, Mr. Ian Rodriguez, if you want to come on up.
Hello, I'm coming to talk on behalf of the women, men and women of Turlock Associated Police Officers. This is gonna go a little long, but it's important that you guys hear it, so I appreciate if you guys bear with me a little bit. Name is Ian Rodriguez, and I work with the City of Turlock Police Department. I have a total of 18 years of law enforcement experience, with the last 13 years of those being with Turlock. In my current capacity, I serve as a police corporal. Was hired on June 27th of 2005. I was one of four officers sworn in that day. Of those four sworn in that day, only two remain employed with the City of Turlock Police today. It's a reality of this job that I have come to realize. Not a lot that wish to become a police officer will make it, and some will realize years later that this career is simply not worth it. I remember the day that I was sworn in like it was yesterday. I remember thanking the City of Turlock for the opportunity to serve this community and for giving me the chance that many will never know. I was thankful that time to have a full-time job, and I remain thankful today. In my 13 years with the Turlock Police Department, I have served as a cadet, patrol officer, field training officer, school resource officer, range instructor, corporal, and a temporary upgraded sergeant. I have attended countless hours of training over the years relevant to my assignments and positions. I can recall serving as a solo officer on the streets of Turlock after passing my field training. Recall not feeling comfortable on the job until about the five-year mark. You see, it takes an officer approximately five years before they truly become proficient at the job. When I speak of proficiency, it's important that you realize that being proficient and competent in your job is the difference between a case being closed out versus it being closed out with an arrest and a conviction in the courtroom. It's the difference between doing the job correctly and a citizen commending you for it versus it being done incorrectly and the city incurring liability. As of recently, the Turlock Police Department has become a training grounds, with officers being trained well, only to higher-paying jobs elsewhere. In today's world, jobs are flourishing in the private sectors, and the current climate of law enforcement... In today's world, with jobs flourishing in the private sectors and the current climate of law enforcement, fewer and fewer people are willing to dawn a uniform and put up with the stress of this profession. We are in a day and age where good police officers are being heavily recruited by other cities, and then the candidate pool is shrinking. In today's day and age, it is ever-important for cities to recruit and retain their officers. Recruit and retain. Over my years, I have seen officers come and go for a variety of reasons, but as of recently, more often than not, the ones that are leaving are leaving because of low pay. I've come here to speak on my experiences when I first moved to this city and to speak up for the younger officers that are simply afraid or unwilling to speak up for themselves. When I was first sworn in back in 2005, it was during the height of the housing market, and prices for homes were extremely high. I quickly realized that my family and I would not be able to afford a home in the city I worked in on the salary I was getting paid. My all-American dream was simply out of reach. I rented for years. I did what many struggling Americans did to try to make ends meet for their families. I cut out everything that was possible, that was absolutely necessary. Worked overtime when available, cut my kids' hair, did my own yard work, and repaired and maintained my own vehicle. Luckily for me, but sadly, for many Americans in 2008, the housing market crashed. But yet, it would not be until 2013 when I would finally be able to afford a home with the help of my father. Unfortunately, I still cannot afford a home in the City of Turlock. Ended up purchasing a home in a different city as the same JKB home was $40,000 cheaper in a neighboring city. Since I was the primary source of income for my family and the breadwinner, the logical choice was to buy the cheaper home and commute the extra 15 minutes to work. I bring all my personal experience today as it even more relevant today. In today's world, we find the prices of homes once again on the rise. I've heard newer officers and officers with single-income families express the same concerns that I faced when I first started back in 2005. I feel it my duty to bring this to the City, to attention of the City Councils as it should be a concern. You may ask yourself, why? Why should it be the City Council's concern at all? So, allow me to explain. In the current climate of the world today that we live in, communities that officers serve in are wanting more say. They are wanting and seeking a police department that offers community-oriented policing. So, I just... So, I say to you, what better way to have officers have a stake in a community than if they were able to afford a home in the city that they serve and be actually stakeholders themselves? I have spoken with newer officers and officers with single incomes, and I've found that they feel they cannot afford a home in Turlock. Or if they did, they'll be scraping by. I know of many officers that live paycheck to paycheck, just as many hard-working, struggling Americans today. As the years have passed, I have hoped and prayed for better days. I have hoped for better wages, but the wages we received have not kept up with the cost of living. Officers continue to leave this department. The city continues to grow, as does the workload. The calls for service continue to increase, and the added work is left on the backs of the tired, depleted workforce. The stress high, the morale low. Yet, I hold out hope that one day I'll finally be able to pull into a jiffy loop and be able to afford having my oil change rather than doing it myself. In closing, I would like to say that men and women, the men and women that make up the Turlock Associated Police Officers are hard-working, dedicated public servants. They are not greedy. I must mention that back in 2008, the Tappo Union, as well as all city unions in the city, agreed to give concessions back to the city to keep people employed and to keep the services that the city needed in place. Yes, you heard that correctly. They willingly gave up money because it was fair and the right thing to do. Fast forward a decade, and Tappo has just barely got back to the pre-2008 salary levels. As you negotiate with Tappo this go-around, I encourage you to remember what I told you here today, and in return, be fair with the men and women that were fair with the city. Lastly, and this is, if you get anything from this, take this to heart. I want to emphasize that I truly believe that this current negotiation and pending contract with Tappo will have a strong correlation on the future quality of police services that this police department would be able to provide to this community. I do not mean this as a threat in any way. What I simply mean is this. I stand here before you as a 41-year-old gray-haired, seasoned officer. Have a college degree from California State University of Fresno, was trained and graduated the police academy, and have had the City of Turlock invest over a quarter of a million dollars in my training alone. And I know it's over that. I'm standing here today on behalf of Tappo telling you I too have dusted off my resume and began to explore my options. I can assure you, I'm not the only seasoned officer that exploring their options also. I've had conversations with them. So, if I as a seasoned officer and me like me are considering our options, what's stopping the younger officers from leaving when they have nothing to lose and everything to gain? On behalf of the men and women of Turlock Associated Police Officers, thank you for letting me go along. I appreciate it.
My name's Tim Redham, the Vice President of Tappo. First and foremost, I'd like to heartfelt appreciation goes out to our dispatchers and the volunteers and our animal control services for their appreciation weeks. They work countless hours, volunteers especially. But I come to you today because I came to this city hall today around 1 o'clock, highly optimistic, with a little pep in my step, walked out dragging my tail, pissed off at the world. Very disappointed in the way things were going at that time. I've heard, at the risk of offending some of my cousins in public safety, no offense, chief, but I've heard a lot of the words being thrown around of fatigued and critical state and doing more with less. We coined those back in 2008, okay? Every person out here with a Tappo shirt, if you could stand up real quick. I submit to this council, that's what fatigue looks like. Not gonna tell you about the overtime that we've worked or anything like that. Thank you, guys and ladies. Not gonna tell you about the overtime that they've worked. Looks on their faces, the bags under their eyes should show you that. Effective today, we lost another police officer trainee. We are losing people faster than we are recruiting them. We have seasoned officers, just like Ian spoke to you, who's looking to go somewhere else. I can tell you by looking at the faces in here without pointing at them, some of the faces in here you will not see in 60 days because they will have gone to another agency, taking the training that we've given them, that we've paid for, that you've paid for, that citizens have paid for, and taking it to another agency where they're gonna benefit the citizens of that city. I'm asking this council to do the right thing when you have your closed session and you discuss with your labor negotiators the status of negotiations. You're going to probably hear the word insulted again. As I saw, that's what your hired gun wrote down. That was the only thing he wrote down after we talked. And that's where we're at again. And I talked to each one of you. We talked about the insult and things like that, and all you're doing is driving folks out of this agency that want to work here. And if this council can blindly throw out half a million dollars because somebody comes up and says, "We're fatigued, and we have a recruitment retention problem, and we've lost one employee in a two-year period," take a look at what we've lost in seven months, okay? I know at the last council meeting, there was some speaking about, from Councilmember Boo Black, "Well, wait, before we commit this money, where are we gonna get it?" But it's still passed. I would expect that same blind loyalty to the public safety officers that are here that have been dragging their tails, that when they're working overtime shifts, are going from call to call to call to call, not sitting for periods of time waiting for a call to come in. And again, this is where Brandon Bertram, our president, says, "I don't possess the tactical diplomacy" that he does. Because I call it like it is. Obviously, none of us got into this business to be rich. Councilmember Boo Black, 23 years, are you rich? Are you ever gonna be rich? Okay? None of us got into this to be rich. We got into it because it's a calling. None of us got into this to be rich, we got into it because it's a calling. And all we're asking for is to be able to have that American dream, to buy a house in which you work in, to be able to see that neighbor in the grocery store, or have that person see you out mowing your lawn and know that they're safe and that, hey, if the cops can live here, this is obviously a good, safe community. Because I'll tell you right now, the people in Houston, where a lot of cops live, enjoy it because it's cop land. Okay? Because they can go buy a house over there and everybody feels safe. There's blocks in here that say, we have one police officer, but I don't, I don't even think he works here, so he has no vested interest. So I'm asking you, please, when you go to your closed session this evening, do the right thing. Thank you.
It was brought to my attention today, a young lady was opening a massage therapy business in the office that I, or rent. And she went down to city hall and she had to pay eighty-four dollars for a business license, which is quite reasonable. But then she was also charged an additional four hundred and ninety-one dollars for an occupancy zoning certificate. And this for a room that's about a hundred and fifty square feet with a massage table and a chair. I have a little statement here, I'd like to pass to the council if it's okay. Lot of talk tonight about officers' salaries, and the only way we're going to pay for those officer salaries is to continue to get businesses to come to Turlock, just and to have new businesses start up. And I think fees like this, at least to me, seem like they might be a bit unreasonable. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Puffer. Mr. Tosta. Keep the subjects coming up together.
I just want to talk briefly. Again, Jason Tosta, I'm here as a citizen of the city of Turlock. During the recent budget, uh, budget meeting, just before the meeting today, there was some very brief discussion about a public safety tax. Mayor Soyseth employed himself to actually elaborate a little bit on the public safety tax, giving certain figures on the approval and to pass it and such. My question isn't to inform the public, is, number one, why has water and roads taken precedence to the safety of the citizens of Turlock? Mr. Camp, uh, Mr. Soyseth has boasted on his campaign website, his success, his treasures, what he holds that he's done best is taxing you and me on water. Your rates are going up a hundred and five percent in ten years, in five years, and he's boasted about increasing and passing Measure L, which increases your taxes for roads. To me, it seems like as a citizen, you exhausted your taxability. Now we want to address public safety, the safety of your citizens. Nobody wants to be taxed anymore, and to me, it looks like you've got things confused. You're out of order in priority in this city. What good is a road tax if you're not safe enough to drive down the road? And as far as a water tax, I would submit that water is very important, but then again, you can't go to a park and drink out of a faucet if you're not safe enough to be in that park. So I encourage people to consider when they go to the ballot box and remember what Mr. Soyseth's priorities are. Roads and water, not your safety. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tosta. Uh, Ms., Ms. Ferrari?
My name is Ginny Ferrari and I live at one-one-two-three Sierra Drive in Turlock. I thought it would be beneficial to provide information regarding the downtown revitalization, as you probably know very little about the project. I've created a folder for each of you with pertinent information. I served on the Turlock Design Committee. The members were charged with creating a renewed downtown. The committee was involved with every element of the revitalization. My earliest paperwork is dated May eleventh, nineteen ninety-nine. The committee met weekly. I've never worked on a committee where members were more focused or committed. The committee was made up of downtown business owners, city of Turlock staff, and a private citizen, and I was the private citizen. The theme of the revitalization project was village green. The goal was to create a pedestrian venue. The committee sought to put people back on Main Street. Every aspect of the streetscape was in the hands of the committee, from the urban footprint to the practical elements such as benches, bike racks, garbage containers, light posts, et cetera. The visual elements, trees, shrubs, and public art. The committee selected not only how to integrate art into the design plan, the committee decided specifically where the public art would be. After visiting other cities and analyzing the newly designed urban footprint, the committee decided that a key element of the public art would be a gateway piece. The committee had identified Main, Lander, and Market Streets as the entrance to the downtown. The committee selected the west end of Main and Market Streets as a place for a striking gateway sculpture. With further study and discussion, the committee decided that the sculpture would be fourteen feet tall and approachable from all sides. Building upon the pedestrian theme, the committee envisioned a sculpture, sculpture that would draw people to examine and explore the artwork. At that point, the guidelines for the gateway sculpture were given to the Public Arts Subcommittee. It would be the committee's charge to create the RFP. I don't have a copy of the RFP. I imagine it had language calling for a sculpture that reflected the culture and heritage of the community. As a design committee member, I was asked to represent the committee and sit on the selection committee once the Public Arts Subcommittee had selected the finalists. The sculpture, Califia, by Donna Billick was chosen. I was impressed with the history and geographical information the artist had gathered about the community. A Turlock Journal article dated May two thousand and two read, "Billick presented the council with clay and concrete models of her design during the meeting." Quote, "My response to the site was to create some sort of guardian shepherd at the entrance of your model," said Billick of the proposal site located at the fifty-foot open area at the convergence of West Main and Lander. Portions of Califia's garment would reflect agricultural images of the area such as melons, fruit trees, turkeys. "Billick will be returning to the area frequently to sketch local foliage," she said. The images from Califia's garments would be reflected in six, in a six-block stretch of Main Street through a series of tiles incorporated into the brick sidewalk as part of Phase Two. The two projects have been estimated to cost around seventy-two thousand dollars. Before work can begin on the two-phase project that Billick expects will take over a year to complete, the city must enter a contract agreement with the artist. The Modesto B wrote, "Market in Main is really the ideal place to put a landmark," this was the quote, said Donna Billick, hired by the city to sculpt the statue and create the tiles. "My response," this is the quote, "to the site was to have a guardian that would be a sentinel to the community. I picked Califia. I intend to create a landmark piece of sculpture that honors the elements of sun and water that make it possible to thrive in Turlock," Billick wrote in her proposal. At that time, two thousand and two, Billick had created sixty-six public art pieces in the United States. They include a bronze casting that was unveiled at the state Capitol the week that the Turlock City Council had voted unanimously to sign a contract with Billick. From a March two thousand Design Arts Committee meeting minutes, "Working with two percent of the overall budget, approximately four million dollars, for the public art elements, we expect eighty thousand as our initial budget." From a March fourteenth, two thousand nine Committee, Design Arts Committee meeting, Tom Erickson and Sharon Silva will meet with Steve Kite to discuss and investigate a budget for art maintenance. "Before the sculpture of Califia was chosen as a gateway sculpture, I didn't know where the name of California was derived. I didn't, I find the sculpture to be informative, engaging, and representative of our community. A plaque was to be made to provide information about the name Califia, as well as the significance of the agricultural products that adorn Califia's garments and the water that streamed from her hands. The water and agricultural commodities were a nod to TID and the importance of our rich farmland. I hope the council restores Califia and finds funds to add the plaque explaining her beauty and history." Thank you.
Ginny. Uh, DeeDee DiAdamo.
Good afternoon. I'm wondering if it's possible, I think Lisa McDermott put in a card.
You guys can.
Okay, I'd rather she go before me because I just have maybe, you know, some personal thoughts haven't been involved in the history.
I don't want to go down the history route, I think Ginny covered it. I do want to say that currently, I mean, I, I go way back with Califia, I'm the one that wrote that RFP, so, um, but at present, my concern is specifically the water feature of Califia. I also teach, I'm not just the director of the Carnegie Arts Center, I'm Lisa McDermott, I didn't get that into the record. I'm not just the director of the Carnegie Arts Center, I'm also an adjunct faculty member at Modesto Junior College, I teach art appreciation. Every semester that I teach, I assign my students public art as a project to write about. Good quarter of my students every year come to Turlock, look at Califia, write papers about her. I don't give them any background information, they have to surmise from what they see in the sculpture, what she means to the community and what she meant to the artist. It's actually one of the most fruitful works of public art in Stanislaus County that students write about. They get engaged, they get excited, they're interested in what she means. They can tell by looking at her what she stands for, which is important. And the water is essential to that understanding. I know there have been concerns about maintenance, but I want to stress, the sculpture doesn't mean what it's supposed to mean without the water. It needs to flow, it needs to be present, and it needs to be taken care of in order for the sculpture to mean what it's supposed to mean, because without water, this valley doesn't thrive. And Califia stands for abundance and how Turlock thrives in this valley. That's all I want to say.
Thanks so much.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is DeeDee DiAdamo, and I appreciate the opportunity to appear before you, mayor and fellow council members. I think I just messed this up.
Since I've been mayor, we have not fixed that at all, so it's just, yeah, sorry about that.
Okay, so I'm here to give maybe more of a personal story. I was not involved in the selection of the public art. I was not involved in the efforts to revitalize the downtown. I was busy working and raising my kids when that was going on, and I am just eternally grateful for the work that Ginny Ferrari and others did to take on this issue and to do so much to improve our downtown. So I'm thankful for the Design Committee, the Public Arts Subcommittee to the Turlock City Council for supporting that piece of public art. I didn't know about those decisions. All I know is that one day I was walking downtown and I, I was just awestruck. I wondered what, what went into the decision, and I spent so much time just walking around the beautiful statue. And I'm here with my husband, Berge Musikian, and he and I, we live downtown and we walk downtown frequently, and that is, Califia is our touch point. We walk until we get to that point, and then every time we're there, we walk around the beautiful statue and we, each time we see something different and we find ourselves commenting about it. Of course, my husband, he's a farmer, he talks about the melons because they have a long, he and his family have a big history in melons, but also the other abundant products or commodities that are on the statue. I, and many of you know, I am a member of the State Water Resources Control Board, and so I always focus on the water and her hands and what used to flow from her hands, the water. We have photographed Califia. I photographed her, my husband has, my brother-in-law, who's more of a professional photographer, and my husband and I, who don't agree on much, he's a Republican and I'm a Democrat, we both have in our offices, he in his office in Los Banos and I at the State Water Resources Control Board, beautiful photography of Califia. Whenever our children are home, we go on walks, usually we go to Latif's first and then afterwards we'll walk downtown, and again, we find there's always a comment about something different. Look at her eyes. What is she looking at? What do you think she's looking at? Maybe she's looking off into the distance at the fields or looking at the sunset in her hat. Maybe she's wearing that hat to represent the hard work that's involved in harvesting our crops. So I too appear before you tonight to thank you, thank the council and the city and all the subcommittees that worked on this for its long history of support, but also to ask that you spend the time and the effort on revitalizing the statue, maintaining it, and getting that water flowing again. Of course, I understand during the drought, the water had to be turned off, but I think that it is, as Lisa said, a true expression of what she stands for and it needs to be complete with the water. The last thing I wanted to mention, my husband, the historian in the family, wanted to make sure that I mentioned not just the history of that place as a gateway, but the history of Market Street as the original market, where farmers brought their crops, and so of course, what a fitting place for such a beautiful piece of public art. Thank you for the opportunity to appear before you this evening, I really appreciate it.
Thank you so much. All right, Mr. Brandon Bertram.
Good evening, mayor and council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. I actually have several comments and responses to other speakers. First, during the special meeting at five PM, I didn't jump up here and talk because it was, well, it is almost six fifteen and I didn't want to prolong the meeting, so I'd like to thank Councilmember Booblack for bringing forward the suggestion that you have a meeting regarding revenue resources. It's obviously well beyond that point that the city can afford to compensate its employees or fund all of the additional expenses that are priority one needs of the city. And I think involving the community and getting the citizens informed as to funding resources, revenue resources that are available would be a tremendous help in you making decisions about where you're going to find the money to deal with all this. And I was up here a few council meetings ago talking to you about the catastrophic state we're at with our staffing, recruitment, and retention issues at the police department. It's only worsened. Corporal Rodriguez came up here and spoke about his consideration of looking at other places for employment, dusting off his resume, I believe is how he described it. Today, we had another police trainee separate from employment, and one of our officers, we currently have six officers that are employed with us that are seeking employment with other agencies. One of them has moved from the testing phase to the the background phase, so yet another, uh, employee is, uh, well on their way towards being employed somewhere else. I spoke with several dispatchers this morning. It's recognition, thank you for the proclamation for our dispatchers. We have seven full-time dispatchers, we're allotted fourteen. Uh, the chief has moved a property technician from the property room, depleting their resources by fifty percent, uh, into dispatch, and, um, we cannot recruit dispatchers. I implore you to open up your lines of communication with the, the community and find the resources for revenues. This has to be fixed. I think we are beyond the edge of the cliff at this point, and we're falling. It's just a matter of determining how bad of a crash we're going to have. Thank you.
Thank you. Someone submitted something that said public comment, was that you?
Sorry.
Yeah, you didn't put your name, Mr. Fransen, sorry. It's like Prince or something like a symbol or.
Oh, yeah, just blank, nothing, great, okay, um. I would like, there's, uh, several things, but it all has a common theme with me, which is, uh, just to take care of business. I've been focusing on, uh, setting policy and following through with process and protocols. And I heard a issue with the downtown, and, uh, former Mayor Brad Bates brought up this Caliphia statue issue that seems to be resurfacing some old issues on it. And for me, the issue is about the functionality and the fiscal responsibility of it. There's been several people that have brought that statue up as far as needing to be maintained in a proactive manner, as far as clear coating it so it could be actually, um, cleaned, and so that there wouldn't be calcium deposit on it, and that has been building up on it. And I put a video of a city worker actually out there trying to clean it, I wanted to show just a partial, um, a partial scene of the process. This person literally, hand by hand, takes a bucket, five gallon bucket, takes the water out, walks to a tree well, dumps it in the tree, goes back, and, I mean, I don't know how many times, let's just say twenty, forty times, and then there's another process where there's a sump pump, and you put it in, and you have a hose going out to a tree well, it fills up, you move it to another one, it fills up, you gotta wait because you can't run it to the street anymore, it's illegal. And, I mean, all of this takes an hour just to drain the water and refill it, so it's not stinking, so people put raw meat in there, I showed, um, you know, I sent somebody a picture, people have gone to the bathroom in it, and I don't know how this has continued, but if you add up a city employee's salary, I believe, let's just say that person's at about sixty thousand a year, and that's not fully burdened, and he's out there chipping away calcium, and he's out there walking and actually dumping this water bucket by bucket, and there's not even a drain plug, which was actually misrepresented when, I believe Brad, um, actually asked, is there a drain plug? Because he had heard about this stuff, and just appalled and amazed of the waste of time and how this even happens. And it was said by Alison Van Gilder that there's a drain plug, and there is not a drain plug, you have to empty this water this way. Then you have to unscrew a cap, you have to walk across the street and turn on a water valve to fill it up, and you have to actually be there. It takes about forty minutes, but you can't go anywhere because if it overflows, so you have to manually go turn it off, put the cap back on. Now, all of this would sound like just a mistake, or, I mean, possibly just like, okay, so you're all being informed about this. The only problem is, is that this has come up for years, and I've sent emails over and over just about the fiscal responsibility and efficiency of it. I don't understand how, when something is brought before this city staff or a city council, how it just can't be fixed. I mean, after it's known, it's known, right? So this has been going on for years, a waste of tax dollar money. We're hearing how a police officer is being told basically there's no money, they get one percent raise, which doesn't even keep up with the cost, but yet if we were to add over the ten years of this process, I mean, we could get into tens of thousands of dollars, a hundred thousand dollars in emptying water. I mean, when is something going to be done, when something's getting brought before this city staff to take care of this? Now, Brad Bates brings up other issues, which he's very pro-art in it, in that he, he finally wanted it cleaned up. It's smelly, there's people using it as a bathroom, it's being ruined, the water does not even flow, it's actually hooked up with a, a hose that's actually looking like it's putting out the water, and he suggested moving it, which sort of has more exposure, but he also mentioned the highest and best use, so talking about downtown as well, there wasn't all the restaurants with the patios there are anymore, so that gateway could have a lively patio of people all lit up. And then I was just downtown this morning, so this is sort of strange that this comes up, but I was actually taking pictures of all the tree wells. The trees, there were electrical boxes planted right next to a tree when it was a baby, and it's grown and it smashed all the electrical boxes, and the grates have to get cut out, and it's lifting up, there's eight-foot deep cement cylinders, and the roots are picking up the whole box now. So it was so the trees wouldn't crack the streets. So now it's lifting up the whole sidewalk in a square, that's why you see the squares. So this has also been brought up too, and it was said that it'd be costly to remove the trees, but the problem's not going away, and I actually used to work for the city, and I was about this deep underground, and they couldn't even find the electrical lines because I guess there was no diagram of even how the electrical boxes are connected to each other. So I just asked that, I mean, we actually look at, at taking care of some of these problems, including the statue, the trees, there's a lot of stuff downtown, the P-Bid that's been brought up before, uh, so anyways, but that's the statue, thanks.
Okay, thanks. Uh, Mr. Treeweiler.
Mayor, council, city staff, and Turlock citizens, Milt Treeweiler. Um, I'm bringing back a subject that I haven't talked about in eleven months, but it's a subject of reality. I'm sorry I don't have a handout for all of you, maybe I should get a video that can go up there on a flash drive, but I don't have that tonight. Anyway, I'm talking about the history of US recessions since nineteen forty-five to date. And this information sheet, which now the council has, shows all the recessions since nineteen forty-five, we've had twelve recessions. And it gives information on their dates, their duration, the time since the previous recession, peak unemployment, and the gross domestic product decline during that recession. Unfortunately for us, and actually the United States and possibly the world, to this month, we reached the eight-year and ten-month time period since the end of the last recession. And that is the second longest time of all the recessions since nineteen forty-five. We still have one recession, it was actually ten years between the end of the previous recession and the beginning of that recession. So the reality is, we're going to have to have a reserve for our general fund. And I wasn't going to get in, get on this subject, but I think a special tax might be the solution to this problem because I don't see any other solution. We can't, you know, okay, let me go on the backside of this, if you'd look it up for a minute. As council members, it's important that you be realistic and have a practical approach in decision-making. I'm asking the same question, do we have sufficient reserves to get the city through the next recession? And I don't know when that's going to be, I don't have a crystal ball, no one in this room has a crystal ball, but we know there will be another recession, and we know it's probably going to be pretty soon, since we've never gone between over ten years since the last one or the previous one. And we're now at eight years and eleven, ten months. I always bring definitions, truth is Oxford English Dictionary, truth is conformity with fact, agreement with reality, accuracy, correctness, reality is a state of being as they actually exist, as opposed to an idealistic or notional idea of them, and I like the Cambridge Dictionary definition of delusion. Let's not be in a delusion. A delusion is something a person believes and wants to be true when it's actually not re-true. So in other words, yes, we will have another recession, and it's going to be very soon. I don't want to be delus, I don't want you to be delusional. So let's not wait until it's here, we have so many issues, and we all hear about them, we're here about it tonight, more than usual, actually, and they're going to have to be addressed one way or another. I don't know how that's going to be, that's why you're here, that's why you're our mayor and council. The Federal Reserve, I remember back in two thousand four, two thousand five, the Federal Reserve, uh, Chair at that time was Alan Greenspan, he was telling us that the economy can go on forever, we're not going to have any problems, this is a new age, a new time, we're not going to have another recession. Yeah, yeah, tell me about it, then we had the Great Recession. Also, I list the ads on the, on the, uh, radio station, they're coming back again, use your home equity, equity to pay off your credit cards, so you have this extra money. No, you can't keep going in debt, no, it can't be done, we've got to get back into reality. Today is the day we need to prepare for tomorrow. I just want to keep that emphasis there and just keep the reality there that we will go into another recession. Thank you very much.
Thanks so much, Mr. True. Anybody else, sorry, anybody else, yes?
Yeah, I didn't.
Yeah, you're fine.
My name is Manuel Jimenez, and I am a resident of Turlock, so I'm also a retired civil servant, uh, been working primarily in county government for twenty-three years, and I can really relate to what some of the folks had today. I have had employees who were county employees on CalFresh, uh, working full-time, um, some of their children on Medi-Cal because they couldn't afford, um, you know, the county insurance that they, a- and I also relate, uh, to the fact that, you know, some people, county employees can't afford, um, to buy homes, uh, in the communities that they work. And I've worked in rural counties and also worked in, um, one of the largest counties in California as well. I, I just want to say that when I took my department one time to, uh, a budget crisis, I brought all people together, a lot of different people together, I brought clerical staff, I brought line staff, I brought housekeepers together, I brought clinicians together, I work in the mental health profession, I, I brought the unions together, and we looked at a system redesign, and we looked at some of the low-hanging fruit, how we could, uh, some things we could cut, some things we could generate more revenue, but we also planned ahead and looked at running a department with a ten, twenty, and thirty percent cut. And unfortunately, I did have to lay people off. I myself went back to therapy at that time, started taking high blood pressure medication, unfortunately, I'm still on it. But, you know, you have to look at, um, different things, and you have to look at, um, bringing different people to the table. Kind of reminds me of a story my dad told me. He lived in a really small town in West Texas, there was only one church, Catholic church, and when that church needed some, uh, some things done, new paint job, something fixed, you know, someone with some extra hammers came, someone with some nails came, someone with some paintbrushes, someone with some paint, and they fixed it, right? The community came together, and afterwards they had a little celebration, someone brought tortillas, someone brought beans, someone brought rice, hopefully someone brought a chicken, maybe a goat, I don't know, but that's what they did. A- and that's what you have to do, I think, when there's a concern in the budget. And I, you know, this stuff happens all the time, you know, county government up and down, city government up and down when it comes to revenues, but I, I wanted you to take a look at something, though. AB one oh nine passed, um, about, what, eight years ago, maybe seven years ago, um, it was safety realignment, right? That's what Brown pushed it as. There was a good firewall between mental health and public safety, and a lot of that money went to, you know, law enforcement, and you might want to take a look at that because I know when it came out, a lot of the money went to the Bay Area counties or the coastal counties, and then the Central Valley counties complained, and so there was a reallocation, and you, folks might want to take a look at what's coming in for the city for law enforcement, you know, and how I can be used, I'm sure it can be used for cost of living allowances, but maybe expanding, uh, what local law enforcement is doing, so I would really encourage you to do that. That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Shaver?
Hi, Terry Shaver, I'm a citizen of Turlock, and I wasn't going to speak on this subject anymore because I pretty much thought everything had been said. Can I, can you hear me? Okay. Um, and I wanted to be optimistic that things are going to change for our police department because I have the utmost respect for our police department and for our police chief. I really wanted to think that things were going to get better, that we were going to fix it this time, because we can't afford to lose any more police officers, and it sounds like we're ready to lose more police officers, and we can't afford to lose anymore. How many are we going to lose before we fix this? How many, how many is the minimum police officers we can do with? I mean, already we don't have enough. And when they tell us there are not very many on patrol at night, and nights when all the crazy stuff happens, I think of our police officers going out, and they never know when they're going to run into someone with a gun, a crazy person with a gun, knives, you never know, I, you stop a car on the highway and you never know what you're walking up to. You have to deal with intense emotional situations all the time. And very few people are cut out for that, and you've got to be willing to pay those people to do that kind of shit work. It's, it's just, because I can't do it, and I need people like these policemen to protect me, and we need to pay them what they're worth. That's all I have to say.
Right, thank you. Is there anyone else from the audience like to address the council on any item? Yes.
Hi, there. My name is Ramiro Valades, I've been living here all my life, and I've had a, this, addressed this problem that's going on. It's been over five months, I've been to the police department, fire department, and, uh, I have pictures here of the problem that's happening with the neighbors next door, they have a, a car burned down a couple months ago, the yard is filthy, it smells really bad, and my parents live ne- next door too, and they go, they get water, they, they don't have water, they don't have electricity, and, um, I just, I'm asking for help, I don't know what to do.
So.
Drugs and all that stuff is probably going on there too.
So I'm not sure the specifics, but I'm sorry that you felt you had to come here, but I'm glad you did, um.
I mean, I don't know, I don't know where to turn, I don't know what to do.
Well, we've got a lot of different options here, and so I'm actually going to, uh, see if the city manager can walk out with you, and it sounds like there's some rebatement issues, so if the fire marshal also wants to jump in and see, and then we'll figure out if there's some other issues we can assist you with.
That, that would be helpful, thanks.
Absolutely. If you want to address that, that'd be great. Anyone else, uh, from the audience like to, uh, address the council? All right, seeing none, closing public participation. Uh, moving on, declarations in conflicts of interest and disqualifications, don't see any, disclosure of top ten maximum contributors, uh, what's within the agenda, consent calendar, what is the pleasure of the council?
Advance consent.
Do I have a second? We have a motion by councilmember Dehart, second by councilmember Scare, uh, clerk, please call the roll.
Adopting the consent calendar. Councilmember Iskare?
Yes.
Councilmember Dehart?
Yes.
Councilmember Booblack?
Yes.
Mayor Swyseth?
Yes, motion carries four, uh, four to zero. No final readings, uh, we have, uh, public hearings. Uh, there's a green sheet for item seven A, a request to approve the fiscal year two thousand eighteen nineteen annual action plan for the community development block grant program and home investment partnership program. Ms. Bed.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and council. Um, I come before you at this time every year, uh, for your blessing and approval of the resolution, um, for us to submit our annual action plan to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, uh, for activities concluded in our consolidated plan and our, our action plan for two thousand eighteen nineteen. The one idea, or, excuse me, the one element that's a little different has to do with the green sheet that you've been provided, and for the public certification, um, that there was an article in the newspaper, uh, a few weeks ago about, um, Howard Training Center who provides senior meals. a few weeks ago about Howard Training Center who provides senior meals, that they have provided notice to St. Louis County that they will no longer be fulfilling that role. We had recommended fifteen thousand dollars toward their program to assist with their congregate sites and, and food delivery for Turlock. What we're asking for, the blessings with Turlock, is we're trying to find an alternative social service or nonprofit to provide those services in Turlock despite Howard Training Center no longer doing the countywide program. We're not quite to the finish line and there has to be some approvals by the nonprofit board, but I think we're close to make sure that those services and those meals continue to support our senior citizens in need here in the city of Turlock. So our, our request is that we maintain the activity as a grant fund in the annual action plan. It just would be awarded to a different nonprofit under the same provisions and contract obligations as, as had been Howard Training Center, as well as the other nonprofits awarded in our public services grant program. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments? From the audience? Bring back more comments, questions?
So mayor, you're saying just keep it in limbo and, and then you guys would reconvene to decide who to give it to if it doesn't go to them, or?
Well, Howard Training Center have the, you've got, attached to the green sheet is the withdrawal, the notification is an email of withdrawing from the grant program. And so what we're asking, and it would come back as a separate contract, a public services contract to the council for approval, but we would like to be able to maintain that fifteen thousand dollars for senior meals activities in the annual action plan. However, we're seeking to find an alternative nonprofit to deliver those services, just for Turlock.
Any additional questions? Yes.
Just, just to clarify, okay, so Howard Training Center won't get the money because they, they're not supplying the service anymore.
Correct. At their, at their request, they withdraw.
Correct, yes, I got that. And so, again, just want to clarify what, what councilman Booblaq had said is... So we're just going to hold this money? Or do we have to approve it or can we just come back to it another time? I, I don't...
Well, what we would like to do is, it's contained in the annual action plan and what we would like to do is maintain the activity in there with the caveat that we would like to find a substitute public, public nonprofit to deliver those same services. Each of the nonprofits awarded in the public services grant program has a contract, it's a subrecipient contract agreement, that the council does approve. And so what we would like to do is to substitute a new nonprofit for Howard Training Center to execute the same scope of, of duties and scope of work in terms of services to the community. Does that answer your question?
Yes, kind of. I'm just, I'm just kind of wondering if, we don't know what the timeframe is because we don't, obviously, we don't know who this other entity might be.
Oh, we're working with one in particular, but they've got to get approval from their board. And if that's the case, then we would bring the, the name and the contract forward.
Okay, so there is somebody and you do have somebody that you consider, okay. That's, that's what I was after. If there's no one, if there's nobody coming forward, I was wondering, why are we going to, you know, keep the money there, just sitting there? How they use it?
So how the public services work is that we get a grant allocation for the Community Development Block Grant Funds. And under the formula and the provisions in the Code of Federal Regulations, that you can spend up to fifteen percent of your allocation and a fifteen percent of any of your program income in public service grants. And so we come up with kind of a formula based on the allocation and program income. And then we set aside a pot of money. Within that pot of money, we delineate activities that we would like to achieve or see. And it's usually dealing with those that are at those most vulnerable populations. So the We Care Shelter, the Senior Meals Program, Emergency Food Box. We've also done, paid for a mental health advocate on the United Samaritans Lunch Trucks to engage some of those folks with mental health issues. So it, it really serves as kind of an option for us to allocate funds to areas of need in the community.
Yeah, I, I understand that, but my question was just, if we did not have an entity, I was going to suggest that we use that money to spread it out amongst the ones that we did approve. That, that was where I was going. But since we do have an entity, never mind.
Thank you.
Introduce the resolution?
Second.
We have a motion by council member Booblaq, second by council member Dehart. Clerk, please call the roll.
Approving the fiscal year two thousand eighteen nineteen annual action plan for the Community Development Block Grant Program, CDBG, and Home Investment Partnership Program, Home, authorizing submission of the annual action plan to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, approving funding for the public service grant program, and authorizing the city manager or designee to execute all related and necessary documents. Councilmember Iskare?
Yes.
Councilmember Dehart?
Yes.
Councilmember Booblaq?
Yes.
Mayor Soyse?
Yes, motion carries four to zero, thanks so much. Moving on to item eight A, requested determine city project number fifteen dash sixty-five, Montavista Avenue widening between Colorado Avenue and Berkeley Avenue, is exempt from the provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act and award bid and approve an agreement in the amount of six hundred nine thousand eight hundred seventy-six dollars and sixty-six cents with Taylor Backhoe Service and appropriate six hundred and twenty-six thousand one hundred dollars. Mr. Bray?
Good evening, mayor, members of the council. Before you tonight, our actions regarding awarding a bid, approving an agreement, making a secret determination, and appropriating funds for project fifteen sixty-five, Montavista Avenue widening between Olive and Berkeley. This project will widen Montavista to the north from a point approximately halfway between Colorado and Olive, right past the DMV and the Vet, all the way to Berkeley. This project will install curb gutter, sidewalk, streetlights, fire hydrants, and road widening to the north, all of which currently are missing. Doing so will address the connectivity gap that exists for both the bicyclists and the pedestrian network. This area is also listed as a priority area in the Active Transportation Plan and the General Plan. Funds for this project have been collected from community facility fees, which are, uh, they're collected as the development occurs. Staff has advertised the project. We received four bids, ranging from the low bid of six hundred and nine thousand to the high bid of nine hundred and thirty-two thousand. We've evaluated the bid, all, all the bids, and we recommend award to the lowest bidder. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any question, comments from Mr. Bray? Real quick, the funding for the actual street, can you describe that really quick about Montavista from January to...
Yeah, so this also ties into the upcoming project, the road rehabilitation project, which is using two funding sources. It's using funding sources of federal RSTP funds, as well as matching funds in the twenty-one oh three gas tax funds. So the effort of installing the widening portion of this project first will be that we install the widening, do the necessary road cuts for the streetlights and the fire hydrants and everything. And then we come back with the overlay and basically cap the entire area so we don't have road cuts, road cuts that'll deteriorate the surface.
So, thank you. Uh, question or comments from the audience? Yes, Ms. Pepper?
Yeah, I had a question on the funding. You said the funding was coming from where, what source?
Yeah, the funding is coming from capital facility fees, which are fees collected from developers as they develop in specific plans.
Okay, and it's going to include putting a sidewalk in front of houses that previously did not have a sidewalk?
That is, that is correct. This project will install sidewalk from where it ties in, from adjacent to the Vet, all the way through Colorado. And then those curb returns are installed right there at Colorado, and install sidewalk all the way from Colorado to Berkeley.
Okay, so these sidewalks and the street widening should add value to the existing houses?
Correct, yeah. I would, I would imagine that value would be added.
Are those homeowners going to be assessed a portion to pay for that improvement?
No, so the homeowners are not experiencing any costs associated with this project. The city, as it's identified, this, this project in, in the general plan, in the specific plans, in active transportation plans, as a priority area. And we've collected fees specifically for these improvements. The city will fund all of those.
Back in the late sixties, early seventies, I don't know the exact time, most of Colorado did not have curb and gutter from certainly Hawkeye up to Montavista. And at that time, there was said to be a need for it. And the city went ahead and did the work. And then each of the homeowners was assessed a certain portion of that that was paid off over the next ten or fifteen years. Since the city is cash strapped now and since these people are getting an improvement to their property, should it be looked into possibly doing the same thing for them? That's my only statement, I'll let you finish up, thank you.
To address Mr. Pepper's comments, I'm not familiar with the, the first scenario about Colorado and that assessment, but the developers have paid into these community facility fees specifically for projects such as these, whether they're the road widening projects or they're traffic signal projects that are identified in the specific plans in which they've developed. The funds that, that they have paid for, there is a nexus for identifying the amount of funds based on the type of improvements. So I would look to the city attorney if there is any issue on not paying for those improvements with these funds that we've collected for. I would, I would recommend using the funds as they were intended.
Just the, the quick comments. Nathan is definitely correct. These funds have been collected for specific projects, this being one of them, regarding assessing actually property owners that have, that, that end up benefiting from it. That would also be difficult to do, given that this is not a project, this is a project that's happening and usually we get permission from them if there's any right of way needed or any property needed. They're actually also, you know, either selling their piece of property, whatever they need for that project. But this is, again, all identified with the fees for developer fees.
Thank you for answering that question when Mr. Bray puts you on the spot. You answer questions.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else from the audience? All right, bringing it back to council, what's the pleasure of the council?
Just a comment. So, Mr. Pepper, I love the way you're thinking. I think perhaps what we will do is probably get more taxation off of them because their property value is going to go up. So we will, we will seek some funding from that. Not, not as much as we need, but we'll, we'll see what we can do. With that, I would introduce the first resolution.
Do I have a second? We have a motion by council member Booblaq, second by council member Iskare. Clerk, please call the roll.
Determining city project number fifteen sixty-five, Montavista Avenue widening between Colorado Avenue and Berkeley Avenue is exempt from the provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA, in accordance with section one five three zero two, replacement or reconstruction of the CEQA guidelines. Councilmember Iskare?
Yes.
Councilmember Dehart?
Yes.
Councilmember Booblaq?
Yes.
Mayor Soyse?
Yes, motion carries four to zero. What's the pleasure of the council on the second?
Introduce the motion and resolution.
Do I have a second? All right, we have a motion by council member Booblaq, second by council member Dehart. Clerk, please call the roll.
Awarding bid and approving an agreement in the amount of six hundred and nine thousand eight hundred and seventy-six dollars and sixty-six cents, Fund three zero seven, with Taylor Backhoe Service, Inc. of Merced, California, for city project number fifteen sixty-five, Montavista Avenue widening between Colorado Avenue and Berkeley Avenue, appropriating six hundred and twenty-six thousand one hundred dollars to account number three zero seven four zero four five 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 one two seven zero, construction project, to be funded from Fund three zero seven for city project number fifteen sixty-five, Montavista Avenue widening between Colorado Avenue and Berkeley Avenue, to complete the necessary funding required for the project. Councilmember Iskare?
Yes.
Councilmember Dehart?
Yes.
Councilmember Booblaq?
Yes.
Mayor Soyse?
Yes, motion and resolution carry four to zero. Thank you so much, Nathan. Uh, moving on to a request to extend the adopted fee deferral program for the capital facility fees, Northwest Triangle Specific Plan and West Side Industrial Specific Plan impact fees, and approve a lien agreement for deferred payment of development impact fees. Mr. Pichana?
Good evening, mayor and council. We have basically two things going on here. First, first item would be the adoption of, the extension of the fee deferral program for capital facility fees. And then be followed by that with the lien agreement. So basic history on the, uh, the program, it started back in two thousand nine. It expired every two years since then and has, again, been continued every two years. It's actually been a very, very good program. The options for the, you know, these are generally the larger projects, larger developments, commercial projects. But the option there is given that they pay the capital facility fees over a period of five years rather than at the issuance of the building permit. With this, it allows the, the financing to work better for a lot of these larger projects. And we have actually two different processes for paying them over five years. There's, the one is a very basic process where they pay twenty percent upfront and then for twenty percent payments afterwards. Or another one, which is more of a geometric scale, which starts at ten percent, fifteen percent, twenty percent, and so on, until you get to a hundred percent over a period of five years. So it's, it gives, it gives the option of selection. The interest rate is essentially a very minimal rate, is the rate that the city of Turlock earns. However, the fees are also modified based on the engineering use record fees, which is, you know, the fee that the engineering department continually utilizes for modifying various fees that, that we have and, you know, within the department. And so that's the basics of the, of the, the process or the program. Just from some background on the program right now, what we have out there. You know, not including the particular project coming up. We have about three point five million dollars in money owed to us. The vast majority of that is all, all particularly one project. That is the Valley Mill Project, which has just been completed here. They have an amount of almost three point three million dollars owed to us. So for information, this is a well-used product, process. However, it's not significant. I have a total of five projects, including the one we're going to talk about here in a sec. So it's not hugely used, but when it's used, the developers, you know, are, you know, benefit greatly and the city also benefits greatly. Because what this is, this is capital facility fees. This is not the daily function, the annual budget fees that, that we have to deal with. This is fees that we use throughout the lifetime of, of the capital facility fees projects. We want to make sure that it's not something that we, we understand it, it's not an immediate need monies. Again, additionally, we have a similar project with the residential projects. We have about six hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars owed on that at this particular time. From two thousand seventeen, we have a hundred and eighty thousand and the remainders is all from two thousand eighteen. So those go very, very quickly. Because they're, they're, they're due actually with the occupancy of the particular residence. So that's, that's a different process. And the second item is the JB Petro Company. They're proposing to conduct and operate the Chevron and Mini-Mart at twenty-eight hundred Fulkriff Road. Their question, or their request actually is to defer eighty-seven thousand three hundred forty-two dollars over the five-year period. They particularly selected the geometric scale, the one I mentioned second, which starts at this ten fif- uh, ten, fifteen, twenty-five percent growth periods times. So that's, that's the, the two items that we actually have for you. First being the resolution to extend the agreement, or extend the pro- uh, program, excuse me. And the second would be a motion to approve this, particularly the agreement.
Any question or comments, yes?
Eric, how, how do people know about this?
It's something we bring up quite regularly at our pre-development meetings. Generally, it, it, most any commercial project comes in. It's something that we try to bring up as part of the pre-development meeting. It's something we actually advertise in our own way. The idea when somebody's going to be spending multi-millions of dollars through, for the city, you know, within the city of Turlock, that's ultimately going to benefit the city with, you know, future growth in taxes, future growth in employment. And we, this is a program that really benefits them. So it's something that, I don't want to say we push right away, but we certainly mention it as like, this is something you really need to consider. We have this as an option for you in which you actually don't have to finance it through your financing program, but actually finance it through the city. And it essentially does give them a, a, a good reason to go this, this direction because the financing charges are probably less than, than market rates.
Any additional comments, yes?
Yeah, Eric, who determines which of the three options?
We actually allow them to select their own options. It's, it's part of the program. You're talking, are you talking about the payback?
The three paybacks, yes.
Didn't need to jump in on you.
No, it's okay. I'm just, I'm just a little uncomfortable with zero. I mean, they pay zero for the first, for the first year. That's a pretty good deal. I mean, we have, we just heard a little while ago, a small business guy, owner's getting zinged four hundred and ninety dollars for a zoning, for an inspection. And then we give other people... And then we give other people zero percent interest, I mean, zero fees for the first year.
Zero fees for the first year, and then it's, then they're, then now the fee is also pushed up by the engineering news record, along with the interest rate that's charged. So it's, what it does, it allows them to get in, get going. That's, the, the purpose of this is really to get the business started, once the business is developed and has the ability to pay these fees back. As the business grows, you know, the city is, you know, reimbursed for, for those fees that were, uh, truly not reimbursed, but actually paid those fees at that particular time, when the business has, you know, growth, and it has possibly the opportunity to expand even further. This is, this is a business-friendly type process, is really what this is.
Have we ever had any problems where we did not, we're not able to collect money for whatever we had?
We have no outstanding debts that are, weren't, weren't, that we're concerned with.
Additional comments or questions from the council or the audience? Ah, Mr. True, ah, Mr. Puffer, I'll have a coin with me.
Eric, uh, good explanation, I do have one question though. Okay, we're deferring this payment for five years, so does that mean the city of Turlock is paying this in advance? Is this something we're using from a reserve fund? Or how is this, is this money being expended? And then they're paying us back for money that the city of Turlock has spent it from some, expended from some fund? Or is this something that, uh, would have been collected? I, I, I don't understand that, it doesn't connect.
The, the capital facility fees is essentially, uh, it's a fund, and from, from the capital facility fees, we have particular projects that we want to build out of that, out of that particular fund. So whenever there's a need, we go to that fund, so that as the fund builds up, you know, we, we build at that particular time. So there's, there, you know, there, there is many items within that particular project list. And so we don't expend unless we have to, but, you know, you know, the fund doesn't always cover the whole value of a project. So in the event that the, the fund is not adequate, you know, there are other fu- funding sources.
Okay, thank you, Eric.
Yes, Mr. Puffer.
Okay, it's my understanding that if you come to the city of Turlock with a, uh, large project that you're getting thousands and thousands of dollars deferred, but if you're a brand-new, small service business coming into Turlock, and you wanna set up a little thing, a little business in a small room, that you're getting hammered with fees right up front. Am I missing something there?
The, the answer is, they still are paying fees. These are only a particular s- function of the total fee system. Capital facility fees are only a portion of that total permit fee. So all the building fees are still covered, other, other miscellaneous fees, state taxes and things like that. This is only capital facility fees. This is, this is not, there are water connections and other kinds of things like that.
I understand, but still, this business is getting, uh, some of those fees deferred, allowing their cash flow to get started, as you said. But you have a person who maybe only has a couple thousand dollars of their name, and they need immediate cash flow just to pay food for the night, and they're not getting a chance to defer their fees. And I, I realize that's not your department or anything like that, I'm just making that general statement for the council. Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments? Alright, bringing it back to council, what's the pleasure of the council? Both can be taken at the same time, oh, yeah, both can be taken at the same time.
On advance, please.
Alright, do you have a second?
Second.
Alright, we have a motion by council member Dehart, second by council member Booblaq, uh, clerk please call the roll.
Extending the adopted fee deferral program for the capital facility fees, Northwest Triangle specific plan, and Westside Industrial specific plan impact fees for an additional twenty-four months. Approving a lien agreement for deferred payment of development impact fees between the city of Turlock and JB Petro, Inc., owner of twenty-eight hundred Fulkriff Road, Turlock, California, nine five three eight two. Councilmember Esquire?
Yes.
Councilmember Dehart?
Yes.
Councilmember Booblaq?
Yes.
Mayor Soysa?
Yes, motion and, resolution and, uh, motion passport zero. Thank you so much, Eric. Moving on to a request to approve the purchase and delivery of, uh, six new police vehicles. Mr. Williams?
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor and council members. Before you tonight is request for authorization to purchase six marked police vehicles, two administrative vehicles, one detective vehicle, and one community service officer vehicle. These are all replacements. They may sound a bit familiar to you, because you approved these purchases on February twenty-seventh, about a month and a half ago. And, uh, what we recognize is, when we actually went to make the purchase, we realized that the staff recor- uh, the staff report, and subsequently the resolution, incorrectly indicated the contract number through which we bid the project. The six marked vehicles, the two administrative vehicles, and the detective vehicle referenced a State of California contract, when in fact it was a City of Sacramento contract. The one community services vehicle also referenced a State of California contract. And again, when we went to make the purchase, we found that that State of Contract, State of California contract had expired. So what we did in that one is, we went locally to the local vendors, and actually did, um, bidding and selected a local vendor within Stanislaus County for the purchase of that one CSO vehicle. So in summary, before you tonight are two resolutions that would authorize in total ten replacement vehicles for the police department in an amount not to exceed three hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. And it might be important to note that that three hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars is money that's already appropriated. We're not asking for any additional money, it's already sitting there. And it's money that in fact has been set aside over years, so that when it comes time to make these purchases, we have this money kinda sitting in a savings account. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
You're missing your opportunity to get a double the order, you can just.
Now we thought we'd do the right thing and come back and clean it up.
Absolutely, uh, any com- comments or questions?
Just a quick, um, yeah, tell you, when I first saw it, I was going like, what? We just did ten, you got ten more, that's wait a minute.
Yeah, any other questions or comments from the audience? Bringing it back to council, see if anyone flips their vote, uh, what's the pleasure of the council on this one? Alright, both, alright, so we have a motion by council member, uh, Booblaq, second by council member Esquire, clerk please call the roll.
Approving the purchase and delivery of six replacement marked police vehicles, two replacement admin vehicles, and one replacement detective vehicle from downtown Ford Sales, Sacramento, California, through the City of Sacramento contract number C two zero one six zero five three one, in a total amount not to exceed three hundred thousand dollars from account number five zero six zero 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 two one three five one zero two zero, police equipment replacement, without compliance to the formal bid process in accordance with Turlock Municipal Code Sections two dash seven dash zero eight B five and two dash seven dash zero eight B six, and declaring replace vehicle surplus once replaced. Approving the purchase and delivery of one replacement community service officer CSO vehicle from McCully Ford Patterson, California, in a total amount not to exceed twenty thousand dollars from account number five zero six zero 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 two one three five one zero two zero, police equipment replacement, without compliance to the formal bid process in accordance with Turlock Municipal Code Section two dash seven dash zero eight B six, and declaring the replace vehicle surplus once replaced. Councilmember Esquire?
Yes.
Councilmember Dehart?
Yes.
Councilmember Booblaq?
Yes.
Mayor Soysa?
Yes, motion carries forward zero. Thank you so much, and moving on to staff updates, we have new policy goals and implementation plan, administrative services. We have a written staff update, which is included in our packet, same with development services. Uh, a verbal update from the fire marshal, is he still here? Do you have something for us?
Good evening, uh, mayor and council. I actually have a PowerPoint, hopefully it doesn't take too long here.
Wait, you said verbal, come on, what's with the PowerPoint?
So if we just follow along real quick, this is an update for, uh, fire prevention, uh, which was implemented back in October of seventeen, uh, at the request of, uh, council member. And, um, so we've, we've had this in play, uh, uh, for several months now. Um, it took a couple months to get it off the ground, as, uh, Captain Bickle came off the engine two days a week, uh, to assist in prevention. And it was, uh, quite an eye-opener to him to, uh, what prevention is all about. It's not just the basic, um, ins- uh, life safety inspection as engine companies, uh, do, um, na- uh, daily. So we'll get started. I think, yes, okay. So, um, I, I've been at this about almost ten years now, and, uh, this is what we used to have in the, in the fire prevention, uh, fire marshal, part-time secretary within apprentice, and two fire inspectors. Um, as we've seen before, this is what we have today. Um, we can add in the, the, um, two days a week with Captain Bickle, uh, which has made a, a huge difference in, in prevention. Um, I can stand up here and say, some relief has came my way, so I'm, uh, proud of that. Um, so what it has done, Captain Bickle has been assisting, on average, a two days a week in the, uh, Fire Prevention Division since October of twenty seventeen. Since then, he has learned a, um, multitude of fire prevention aspects, and is able to be on his own to complete various inspections, such as solar, uh, residential solar systems, uh, fire inspections, occupancy inspections with the building department for business occ- occupying new space, re-inspections of occupancies and miscellaneous re-inspections as needed, inspections for, uh, licensed daycare, uh, assisted living facilities as requested by the State of California, uh, mandated state inspections for schools, apartment complexes, assisted living facilities, and medical facilities, provided weld inspections for sprinkler contractors prior to sprinkler, uh, pipe installation. And the, and these are really basic inspections that he is doing for me, the more technical, um, he is learning, but it takes quite a while, he's actually, um, attending a class, uh, this week. Um, he came in the office pretty surprised yesterday after a class, and wanted to discuss everything that he's learned. So, it's, it's exciting for him. Uh, Captain, uh, Bickle has been a huge help with Fire Prevention Division. Uh, this has allowed the fire marshal to, to customers and complete plan reviews at a, uh, much quicker pace. Previously, if the fire marshal was out of the office, uh, a day or more, uh, there would be delay inspections. Um, currently, if the fire marshal's out of the office, Captain Bickle's able to assist with, uh, inspections. Uh, Capo- Captain Bickle's also been an asset in updating and maintaining, uh, the maintenance side of prevention op- uh, operations. He helped reach out, uh, to property owners to repair or replace equipment, such as Knox boxes or non-functioning optocom sensors, uh, for gated communities. So we had some that, uh, were lacking, um, uh, where we would show up at the optocom in emergency, a medical emergency or a fire, and, um, they would have to get out and do the gate switch type of thing, and delay the response, so now, um, he has actually completed every single one in the community, so we know they're all working now. Uh, before Captain Bickle started helping, uh, in prevention, planner reviews were taken approximately six to eight weeks to complete, and I had several of them in my box, um, during this time trying to, um, get completed. Um, now plans of being reviewed have been, uh, completed, uh, in approximately three to four weeks. A big difference. Um, inspections were scheduled out two to three days at a time, um, 'cause my schedule was booked for at least forty-eight hours, so if you called in today, I may, I may be able to get to you on Friday, that is how it was. Uh, today, uh, we are getting to inspections, most of them on a twenty-four hour turnaround, which is really good. Request, uh, water, uh, a request for water flows for sprinkler systems, uh, they would take up to seven to ten days for me to get out there and do them, as I was trying to conserve water, so I'd had, need help to go out and, and get these things done. Uh, today, we are getting them turned around within four to five days. And then contractors, uh, requesting a fire code interpretation would take up to, uh, a week to do the research by the fire marshal. Uh, uh, Captain Bickle's learned this, um, I, I'd handed him a couple of them, and he's like, where do I find this at? So when we have to look through several codes, California Fire Code, NFPA Code, or Title nineteen, or they go back and forth between, uh, uh, the mechanical code and, and other codes within the California Code, 'cause they always say, refer to, once you find it in the fire code, it say, refer to, then you gotta go find another code. So now, we are able to turn them around, um, in two to three days to keep the, the customer going on, on their needs. So, uh, a, a big difference there as well. The o- the other aspect of, uh, Fire Marshal is the fire investigation team. Um, it was at five members, now we are down to three members. Um, we no longer have an investigation, uh, investigator at each shift. So, um, the fire, the, uh, fire investiga- investigation team consists of, um, the fire marshal, um, shift investigator Bernard, which is on C-shift, and then police detective Tosta. Uh, when Captain Bernard is off-shift, the fire marshal responds to incidents, uh, for investigations during the week and after hours and weekends. So I use an example, the other day we had a fire at, um, Sonic over on, uh, Montevista. I was called out at four o'clock in the morning to do the investigation, and I stood the whole day, 'cause I had appointments at, uh, eight-thirty, starting at eight-thirty in the morning. So I, I continued my day till, um, about six o'clock that evening, so, um, just shows that my day gets shuffled around, and with, with Captain Bickle there now, he's able to pick up, uh, some of the, um, activities during the days, and keep, keep prevention going, so. So with that, I, I know it shows a huge difference, just two days a week, can we imagine what five days a week would be? But, um, we can work on that in the future. Any questions?
Shameless plug, I like that, good job, fire marshal, yeah, any questions or comments, yes, council member Booblaq.
Comments, um, we were talking, I guess, the last meeting, 'cause you and I experienced the layoff, uh, we basically took everybody you had, uh, away from you.
Yes.
When we did the layoffs, and that was a terrible day. Um, I appreciate what you've done, uh, obviously customer service is huge, eh, but it also, it shouldn't fall on one person to, to do all of this, and so I, I, I'm glad that you found somebody else to assist, and that we can see that it's recordingly easy to find, that the more people to get involved, the quicker the customer service, and it's more efficient, so I appreciate what you did, thank you.
Thank you.
Any question or comments? Thanks so much, fire marshal, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Alright, Mr. Cook, I believe we have an update on groundwater workshop.
Good evening, mayor and council, while, while we're on the subject of shameless plugs, so I wanna plug a workshop next Wednesday, April eighteenth, to you and the community. Uh, join us in Series at six o'clock at their community center to talk about groundwater in our region, how this region will try to comply with state standards for gra- groundwater sustainability. We're starting to put together a groundwater sustainability plan, and we need the public's input as we work towards over the next two to three years. So we're trying to get the public engaged early and often, and get their, uh, input, and also explain to them the processes we're going through. So a lot of agencies in this region, from the Merced River to the Tuolumne, to the San Joaquin, are, are coming together to put on this workshop, and we really encourage attendance. So I'll pat, the flyers are at the back of the room, but I'll give Milk his personal copy before I leave. And, uh, if you need a ride, Milk, Milk, I'll give you a ride there too, okay? Thank you.
Alright, thanks, Mr. Cook. Alright, before we, uh, leave, I wanna go back to nine, uh, one, policy goals and implementation plan, 'cause there's a blue card, uh, Ms. Branson?
Hey, I, I just wanna make a, a comment on the staff updates. Um, it's still part of the agenda, and, um, you know, thank you for allowing comment. Um, on the agenda, there's always, um, for staff updates, the plan that was brought up on, that identified the radio system needing replacing. It's the mayor and council policy goals and implementation plan. That's on the agenda every time, and I don't really see updates on it. That is, I believe it's presented, it just says executive staff, I don't know if that's the city manager, and because we have an interim city manager, but that's been, you know, I don't know how long we're going on now, about nine, ten months. But if that would have been presented to you, and if you guys were to keep this coming forward, you would have known that the emergency radio system that has been failing for eight months would have came up before you. And it was known, and it's put in the, uh, request for the budgets, but these staff updates, I believe this is the stuff that I want my city council to constantly be informed of, and almost like a checklist of a follow-through. You guys set resolutions, and we've seen some examples where the council's resolutions just are not adhered to, or they're forgotten. Um, and so I, I, I think it would be important, especially for that one, it's a thirty-page document, and, um, it's, it's very, um, it's very informative to keep the focus on what you guys need to set policies. So for example, I, I just quickly, it says that the mayor and the, and the city council's adopted organizational policy goals are as follows. policy goals are as follows. And this was something all of you said except for Councilman Esker, he wasn't on. So this was set like two thousand in, I think, fourteen or fifteen, but for two thousand fifteen, nineteen. But it says, number one, effective leadership, two, fiscal responsibility, three, public safety, four, municipal service, um, infrastructure, five, economic development, six, intelligent plan to manage growth and seven, quality community programs. And in the policy goal number one, effective leadership, it says foster innovation and promote positive change, provide clear organizational purpose and vision, be accountable and provide recognition when appropriate, proactively respond to emerging issues, exhibit professional excellent behavior, which I think you all have done. Uh, it says six to demonstrate personal commitment to the organization and the community, promote organizational and community engagement, provide responsive and timely communication utilizing the chain of command. Um, I s- I still am asking, um, for the request by Councilman Esker to have a council retreat or workshop. It's, I think that, I think I get what he's saying that got misunderstood. I don't think it's to get to know each other like your guys' favorite colors and, and food. It was to get to know each other and how to set policy, like for example, which I love that Councilman Esker does point out his own stuff, but when you were, um, appointing a planning commission and you as the mayor are the one that's supposed to make the nomination and Councilman Esker made one. And it was sort of, it threw everything out of whack. Now, he admits a lot of times he doesn't really know he's catching up and I think that that could have been an issue where if maybe there was some workshop put on by someone that would help, help get you guys to know some of that stuff and how to set policy. And I just wanna bring up too, in that discussion, which is the first time that I've seen, so I've been actually covering this a lot for twenty years, it's the first time I've seen an agendized item to an agendize an item. So, I mean, that, that's just, I, I mean, I don't know when the last time that was ever done, but it's the first time I saw it. And in that, with the request for the work tro- uh, the workshop and, and retreat, the only information provided was that it could, could cost, you know, five thousand four hundred dollars. That to me, the intention just shows that that was something to stop forward progress. That wasn't, I believe your staff should be looking to get whatever you're trying to accomplish done, not hinder it or stop it. There was an alternative that came up very quickly though, that it could be done by free. Um, it could be done for free, which had been done in the past, actually. So, and this council still has not had a, a meeting that usually happens, which goes over Brown Act. Again, I was actually, uh, corrected, I don't know which rule of order this, uh, meeting has, but, um, Jose, by the way, I, I gotta say, he's been very helpful since becoming, uh, interim city attorney. Um, he's provided a lot of fact clarification, but he's informed me that, of some stuff that I didn't really know on how this meeting is supposed to be ran either. And I think it'd be very beneficial if you guys did have that workshop just on that. And then also, if you have staff updates here that's saying staff updates and there's not, especially for your policy goals and implementation plan, I think your staff should be trying to help you keep, keep on that track because you guys are not in that position for a full-time job. It's, uh, you know, Councilman Dehart stated, um, several times, you don't have the time. They're the experts, but if, if things can't come before you, then you can't make a decision. And also just, uh, um, on another note too, I wanna thank, uh, Councilman Dehart. He's had surgery, I don't know if it's been said, uh, but he had surgery. He's almost at every, I think he's at every single meeting that I've seen. And I just really appreciate that commitment as well, 'cause it shows. So anyways, um, uh, I would like though, the staff updates on that one plan that you guys set to keep you informed and on track. Thanks.
All right, thank you so much, Ms. Franson. All right, ma- moving on, matters for the agenda and items, don't see any council items for future consideration? Yes?
So obviously there, there's somewhat of a crisis here in how we're gonna handle our revenue. So I, I think it's, eh, it's hugely important that we go ahead and set a special workshop for the public and for us so that we can have that dialogue a- as soon as possible.
Absolutely, so we can have, uh, the city clerk, uh, pull the council. But I think that we need to also be careful with, with our rhetoric about what a crisis is and what it, it isn't. And I think that we do have a lot of expenditures coming at us, but we have very healthy reserves. Uh, our numbers came in stronger on every s- section, our sales tax revenue. Uh, we're thirteen percent of the population in the county, but we're fifteen percent of the sales tax revenue, so we're punching above our weight. And so it's about where we spend that money and we need to bring everything to the table, everything from our fees to, uh, potential taxes. I'd like you to kinda hone down a little bit more on your, your ideas of, is it a special tax? Is it a general tax just for public safety? Is it a half cent, quarter cent? I haven't seen any of that fidelity, so please, uh, do some of that, work with staff. And, uh, we'll get that pulled. Jen, can you pull the council to see when their availability is and we can go from there? Time is of the essence, I agree, because of those deadlines, so thank you so much. Any additional council items? All right, uh, council comments? Yes, council member Skare?
Yes, I do have a couple of, we come to these, we get these, we keep getting these letters in our mailboxes and I, I'm not trying to ambush anybody or throw anybody under the bus, but I'm just wondering, how, how do we address these? Well, it's, uh, we, I got here and I had all these letters in my mailbox, but the, uh, noise, uh, over on Wayside Villa or something, so, you know, how do we, how do we help these people out? 'Cause apparently it's been going on for a while. I'm not totally familiar, all I know is what I've read here, some of the handwriting is not totally clear, but I try to make through, um, so I'm just hoping that, um, if I'm getting a letter, somebody's sending something to me, I wanna get an answer, so. Captain, if I can address maybe the, the chief or you or somebody, work on, we can work on this and see what's going on, what their actual problem is, if there's anything we can do about it. Uh, this other one that, uh, they brought in tonight, um, do we have some way that we can justify why we charge four hundred and ninety-one dollars for an inspection for an office? I, you know, I, things like this, I would like to address or have addressed or figure out, how do we, how do we take care of these people?
Absolutely, so if the city clerk or, I know Stacy receives a lot of our mail and opens it, if you guys could, uh, scan, uh, to see what the subject matter is and make sure the director of, of that issue, for example, like you said, this is about directing towards police services, 'cause of noise, that's about building services. So if you could make sure that that director's aware of it so that we're not the experts on these, so we know how to answer and reply or have the director reply. And hopefully that'll cut down on it and so we won't be caught up. Uh, additional comments? All right, moving on to closed session items, uh, Mr. City Attorney, what do we have?
Uh, mayor, few items under closed session. We have actually seven different properties under, uh, conference with a real property negotiator, uh, pursuant to government code section five four nine five six point eight. We also have labor negotiations pursuant to California Government Code Section five four nine five seven point six A and also conference with legal counsel anticipated litigation under Government Code five four nine five six point nine D two, one case.
Perfect, all right. Before we adjourn, let us all stop and pause of the compliment that is paid to the city attorney for Mr. Franson. Good job, I like it. All right, thanks for working with each other and, and getting those answers out. Uh, do I have a motion adjourned to closed session? Do I have a second? All right, we have a motion by council member Skare, second by council member Dehart, all of us favor say aye. It's four zero, we're adjourned. Thank you.